Okay, the time is now 5:01 and I'll call the special meeting to order. Roll call was taken and we'll go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. All right, and the agenda's on the table if anybody needed them. And we do have public comment after our executive session. Should we move it forward to do public comment before? Or do we just want to do it after? We'll do it after. But for the 6:00 PM, do that one. Okay, so we will move into executive session at 5:02 and then we'll let you know when we open back up for public meeting.
Recording stopped.
The time is now 6:03 and we will open the meeting back to the public. And are we connected to Zoom, Tyler? Okay, so now we're still in the special meeting and we are on to item four, which is public comment. Or do we want to do? Yep, four? So. "The public comment portion of the meeting is set aside for the public to address the board as a body. It is not a time for board response or for the public to ask questions. Do not infringe on the right of privacy of others. Please sign in and spell your first and last name. You are limited to three minutes per speaker. The chair can interrupt and terminate an individual speaker if the statements are out of order." Any public comment? For the special meeting, yep. Yep, right there. Yep, we have not started the regular school board meeting, which will be after this. Okay. No public comments, so now we'll move on to item five of the special meeting, which is to identify superintendent candidates for the interview. I will take a motion, a full board motion from anybody? Vice Chair Walker Andrews?
I'd like to motion that we ask Micah Hill from our current list of candidates to be interviewed on March 7th. And we ask that our attorney, Elizabeth Calleva, please contact him to arrange it.
Second, second by trustee Sherman. Any final trustee comments? Trustee Decker?
Just as ever, enormous thanks and appreciation to the staff who have helped us through this next process of reopening the superintendent search and particularly to Tracy Long for all of her incredible organization and legwork getting all of this done. It's over and above.
Yes. I agree. Thank you, Tracy. She's in her office. Let's wave at her. All right, any public comment? On the motion? Seeing none? All those?
I'm sorry to interrupt. We did get kicked off of Zoom very briefly. If you wouldn't mind holding on just a couple of minutes. Thank you.
Oh, so Tracy didn't hear our comment, did she then?
It looks like we're ready again. Thank you.
Yep, that was Tracy.
Tyler, do we have Tracy on board?
We do not.
We need to wait to get her. She's taking a minute.
Can you hear me?
Hi, Tracy. We hear you. Okay. So what part did you? Tracy, did you get the motion?
I did not get anything. I was not in the Zoom yet. They hadn't brought me in.
Okay, so we had no public comment. We're item four, no public comment. We moved on to item five, which is to identify superintendent candidates to interview. Trustee Dec- Vice Chair Walker Andrews made a motion. Are you going to go ahead and repeat it?
I'll repeat it. So I made a motion that we I can't remember the exact wording anymore, but I make a motion that we invite Micah Hill for interviews on March 7th. And we authorize our attorney, Elizabeth Calleva, sorry, to arrange these.
Second by trustee Sherman. No public comment. Final comments by trustee Decker? If you want to repeat it.
Yes, it was important that we say it again. We are so appreciative of everything that the staff has done to make this round of reopening possible and smooth and particularly Tracy Long, who has done so, so much to make it happen, logistically and behind the scenes. So thanks so much. And everybody applauded, and we're going to do that again.
And we want to see it reflected in the minutes.
Okay, so. Any final public comment on the motion on the table? Seeing none? Thank you, Bea. All those trustees in favor for the motion on table, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present, motion pass. And item B is to schedule interviews. You guys all have the paper in front of you for candidate A. Candidate A, which is Micah Hill. Can I have a motion from the board to approve the interview schedule in the expense of the board to reimburse the candidate? Moved by trustee Decker, second by trustee Sherman. Any final trustee comments? Seeing none, any public comment? All those trustees in favor for approving the interview schedule and reimbursement expense, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Trustee Decker? Unanimous to all trustees present? Motion pass. The time is now 6:10 and we will adjourn and we'll return briefly for the regular school board meeting. Give us a couple of minutes.
Recording stopped.
Two minutes and we'll start. All right, the time is now 6:16. I'll go ahead and call the regular school board meeting on February 28th to order. Roll call was taken. And we'll go ahead and stand to do the we'll go ahead and stand and do the pledge of allegiance. All right, thank you and thank you for bearing with us for the late start as our special meeting went over due to executive session. So now we'll move on to item three, which is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. Any trustees want to move or remove an agenda item? Seeing none? I'll take a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Moved by Vice Chair Walker Andrews. Second by trustee Witt. Any public comment on the agenda items? Seeing none, all trustees in favor for approving tonight's agenda, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present? Okay, now we'll move on to item four, which is to approve the minutes from the special board meeting on February 2nd, 2023. Is there a motion by trustee? Moved by trustee Sherman. Second by trustee Witt. Any trustee comments? Seeing none, any public comment on the agenda item to approve the minutes? Seeing none. All trustees in favor of approving the minutes for the special board meeting on February 2nd, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present? Now we're on to 4B, which is to approve the special meeting minutes from February 7th. Is there a motion by trustee? Moved by trustee Witt. Second by trustee Sherman. Any trustee comments? Seeing none, any public comment on the minutes of February 7th? Seeing none. All trustees in favor for approving the minutes of February 7th special meeting, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present? So now we'll move on to item five, which is public comment and correspondence. "The public comment portion of the meeting is set aside for public to address the board as a body. It is not a time for board response or for the public to ask questions. Do not infringe on the right of privacy of others. Please sign in and spell your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. The chair may interrupt the individual if the statements are out of order or over three minutes." Any public comment?
Can you hear me now? Hi, my name is Travis Matier. I'm a Missoula resident, independent journalist, and father of three kids. Two of them are at Target Range. One of them's MCPS. I have serious concerns about the lifeguard group and I want to let you know today about my concerns about the lifeguard group. They are an anti-trafficking group here in Missoula. They do training in schools, training people to identify the red flags of trafficking. The head of the lifeguard group is also the chaplain of the Missoula County Sheriff's Office. I've had some really productive conversations with people at Target Range about my concerns and Target Range will not be employing any of the training, nor will they be showing the podcast Stolen about Jermaine Charlo going missing. If you watch the Stolen podcast, you will notice some concerning behavior in terms of confidential criminal justice information. And I would ask yourself why a chaplain would be sitting in on an interview with a suspect. You're talking about new leadership today. We're going to be having a new police chief. We have a new sheriff. We will have a new mayor. We might need to have some new policies and a new level of scrutiny about what's happening in the criminal justice system to keep our families safe. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Hi, good evening. My name is Ashley Schleicher and I am the family engagement manager at the Missoula Food Bank and Community Center. As you know, the food bank has been working on the School Meals Are For Everyone campaign and we've been working with MCPS on ways to make school meals more accessible for the children in our community. Over the past six months, I've held engagement nights for community members, surveyed customers of the food bank, ate several school lunches in school cafeterias, talked with parents, and had conversations with school administrators and staff. I can tell you overall that the families who qualify for free or reduced meals are greatly appreciative for the lunches. And I can also tell you that these, that there are more families that need more help. In 2022, one in five Missoulians used the food bank. Over the past three weeks, I surveyed 541 of these customers. Eighty-five percent of them said that having free school meals would help the Missoula community and eighty percent felt that full bellies helped students learn and engage better in school. In addition, this past Friday, I surveyed 328 students at Hawthorne Elementary and twenty-four percent of the students there said that they still feel hungry after school lunch. I know how passionate and empathetic each of you are. You wouldn't be here if you weren't. I've been in your early learning fellows program or been at your son's birthday party at Currents or had you teach my son how to bike or mountain bike this past spring. And he also thinks you're the coolest still. You all love children and I know that you want to make the best learning environment for them. But I'm telling you that right now, our current school lunch program is not meeting the needs of our community. Children are hungry during the school day. Teachers are having a more difficult time teaching due to behavioral issues because of this. Students are less engaged and aren't learning as well. And families are facing hard financial choices. I'm asking that the school board and administration come together to talk about this basic need of the students that aren't being met. Please prioritize making sure that school, that children are fed. Use your influence to help thousands of children in this community. Have school meals be a part of your legacy. Let's work together to make it so that all students have free food during the school day. We can find solutions together and there are multiple paths to do this. Many school districts across our country have achieved this and we can too. I want to invite you to our next engagement night, Tuesday, March 7th, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. It'll be at the Missoula Food Bank and all are welcome. Please look for my public comment email with more information on the solutions and then some of the data that I mentioned. Thank you very much for your time.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to item six, which is reports and announcements. And item eight is our student trustee reports and we have our students here. So we'll go ahead and start with Big Sky High School.
Hi, my name is Noel Malaccio and I'm one of the student trustees for Big Sky. And I'm just going to go over some of the leadership stuff that Big Sky has done this past month. So this past Wednesday, we hosted the Class of 2027 at Big Sky and introduced all of them to the activities, educational opportunities, and upperclassmen that are ready to greet them this August. Our key club volunteered at the Missoula Food Bank this past Saturday in making them power packs for our local schools. The art club is preparing a painting show in which they will be painting a story in which they choose. And they will also have an art show coming up in about a month. And we had three DECA students qualify for Nationals in April in which they will travel to Disney World in Florida to demonstrate their career knowledge and skills as well as attend workshops on similar topics. For our activities, our Big Sky Boys and Girls Basketball Teams will be heading to divisionals this week and hoping for great outcomes in the tournament. The boys are coming off a win against Flathead during their senior night and the girls are going in confident after defeating both of their crosstown opponents this past month. Our drama is putting on a production of Take Five, a comedy show, which will take place next week at our high school. Our World Class Club will be attending a statewide competition at the university regarding world issues and current events this next week. And our speech and debate students are fundraising for their program for Nationals. They are doing a pork raffle and will be selling tickets until the end of April when they will draw the winners. Thank you.
Thank you. And so next up, we'll do Hellgate High School.
Good evening. My name is Chloe Caldwell and I'm a student at Hellgate High School. At Hellgate, this past week, we just wrapped up the final aspects of our GOAT game in which we won against Big Sky in our boys' basketball game and in the entire spirit war. For our sports, eight seniors signed to continue their athletic career in college on signing day this past month. Hellgate Boys Swimming took state, why, one of the largest margins in a couple of years. And both basketball teams are first in their rank for divisionals this weekend. Hellgate High School has the most presidential scholar nominees in Missoula and with ten students reaching the candidate stage. Our Hellgate Advanced Problems in Science is going to BUTU this weekend to compete in the International Science and Engineering Fair. And we just added a new IB course, IB Business Management, and three new AP courses, AP Seminar, AP Comparative Government, and AP Environmental Science for next year. Business Professionals of America is sending 23 students from Hellgate to the state conference for 63 different events, which is the largest number ever in the Hellgate BPA chapter. Speech and Debate qualified two public forum debate teams and one informative speaker for Nationals this year. And Art Club has a juried art show this Friday, March 3rd, which is First Friday, at the Missoula Public Library. There will be snacks, the Hellgate Jazz Band, and of course, incredible art by Hellgate students selected by Hellgate art staff. For the All Northwest Music Festival a couple of weekends ago, four orchestra musicians, three band musicians, and the entire Hellgate Chevaliers Choir ended up making it. Upwards of $5,000 was raised to help repair the instruments in severe disrepair within Hellgate Orchestra through a benefit concert on January 20th. And our very own Spanish teacher, Milton Ginyen Barreto, was awarded Educator of the Year for his dedication not only to Hellgate High School, but his students as well. And one great example of that dedication is the Spanish clothing swap that the Spanish department put on within the whole school that was extremely successful and included a sewing and repair station and the option to just exchange clothes for different ones that are brought in by other students. Thank you very much.
The Golden Goat Game was awesome and both your schools did really well. It was awesome to see the community in the Adams Center, so great job. And now we'll move on to Seeley Swan High School. Owen online.
Hi, everybody. I'm Owen. I'm the student trustee for Seeley Swan High School. Starting out with sports, both our boys and girls basketball teams won their senior night games against Charlo. The boys ended up losing out in our district tournament after losing their challenge game. The girls won the 13 seed district tournament to advance to divisionals, but ended up losing out this last weekend and were unable to advance to state. We're getting ready for track starting in the middle of March. It's looking like we're going to have a pretty big track team this year. As far as clubs at Seeley Swan High School go, the SSHS Student Council hosted a blood drive on February 15th. The Leos Club plans to help the senior center host their annual St. Patrick's Day dinner. And the BPA Club is preparing for the state conference on March 13th. Couple miscellaneous items. The Wildlife Biology class took a field trip to Missoula to visit the Boone and Crockett Club and Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation, where they learned about wildlife conservation in North America. They also learned how to identify animals using their skeletons. Dual credit government class is also working on various community service projects for the spring. Thank you.
Thank you, Owen. We'll move on to Sentinel High School.
My name is Jesse and I'm the student trustee from Sentinel. Wrestling and swimming finished off their state competitions with great showings from both teams in Billings and Great Falls respectively. Basketball has its state tournament fast arriving scheduled for March 9th to 11th. With these sports coming to a close, spring sports are now ready to launch. And tonight, Sentinel hosted their spring sports meeting to garner interest in track and field, tennis, and lacrosse. These sports will begin practicing on March 13th. Today and tomorrow, Sentinel Band students are participating in the annual UM Concert Band Festival and our band is also preparing for the Double A Band Festival in Great Falls on March 6th and 7th. Speech and Debate finished off their season at the NSDA National Qualifier Tournament in mid-February that was hosted at Sentinel, qualifying two competitors for the national competition in Arizona. They're hosting a banquet later this week to celebrate their season. Academic World Quest is preparing for their big competition held at the University of Montana on March 6th and 7th. This is an event that challenges participants' knowledge of global issues with topics this year ranging from wildlife conservation to economic sanctions. This year is projected to be the largest edition yet with over seven This year is projected to be the largest edition yet, with over seventy teams registered. Amnesty International is currently looking at bills pending in the Montana Legislature and writing to express their views on them. Finally, our students are continuing with their great community involvement and school improvement efforts. Student Government recently designed and donated a new window in our gym to celebrate Spartan Pride. Key Club is continuing its great work, sponsoring yet another blood drive for students and the local community, as well as continuing with their recycling and social connection efforts. Additionally, Freshman Night, sponsored by Sentinel Spartan Ambassadors, is coming up this Wednesday, March first, where they will welcome all of our upcoming freshmen, offering tours of the school and a taste of the types of activities that Sentinel students are able to participate in. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for your reports. Now we'll move on to six B, which is the Health Insurance Trust Fund Report. It's included in our packet, and there will be no oral report. So six C are announcements from the superintendent.
Good evening, everybody. A few announcements. We, we've received the copies of our demographic report, uh, which takes it out for ten years, and it's pretty interesting to look at, uh, as well as, um, the need lately that we, uh, need to look at our middle school boundaries and which might expand into looking at other boundaries as well. So what I'd like to do is just put you on notice a little bit that we'd like to bring the people who, uh, did our demographic study to a board meeting via Zoom and share it with everybody. I think it's data that you need to have as you move forward. It'll weigh in decision-making, and we have lots of that question marks around our district of where our attendance will be and in what schools. And, and I think it would be very valuable for the board to sit in on that. And I, I would hope to be able to bring that to you, you know, late March, early April, and put that on an agenda. And perhaps it's even, and that's what I was gonna ask you about. Yeah, perhaps it's even a five o'clock meeting, uh, where it's a, or more of a work session, and we have a chance, you have a chance to converse a little bit. So those things, those two items are, I think, uh, worthy of some time. Uh, the other one is just, um, the other study that we have is the Functional Capacity Study. What each one of our buildings has and can hold as far as students go. We're gonna bring that to our Facility Subcommittee Meeting soon. And then it, you know, it'll be a combination of those, the demographic study and the functional study and then middle school boundaries. So there's work to do there, but I think we need to get the middle school boundary study, at least in discussion, kind of off the ground, and maybe some kind of timeline that we can look forward to over the next six to eight months, so that, uh, we're not having to just wait, uh, for my replacement to get it going, and I, I think we need to get started. We, we have a pretty big inequity between two of our middle schools, and it's, the, the trend line seems to be widening rather than, um, getting smaller. So it's, it's time to take a look at that, see where we're at. And that, that won't be an easy discussion, uh, but I, I don't think there's any way around it right now, so. Anyway, those are my announcements, and, uh, we'll go from there. Thanks.
All right. Now we'll move on to item seven, which is the Consent Agenda. It's routine items. There will be no board discussion. If a board member wants to remove an item to be discussed, they may do so. Is there any? I do not see any. So we have, um, seven A, which is Finance Operations Acknowledged M C P S Student Attendance Agreements. Is there elementary motion to approve the Consent Agenda items? Moved by Trustee Witt. Second by Trustee Mercer. No board discussion. Any public comments? C N N, all elementary trustees in favor for approving the Consent Agenda? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimates to all elementary trustees present. So now we'll move on to item A, which is New Business. We have, um, eight A one, which is the Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-Four General Fund Projections. It's information only, and I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. McHugh.
All right, thank you. Um, I, I know we've talked about this virtually every meeting, it seems, for the last, uh, uh, three or four, but we'll continue to do so just to keep it in the forefront of the board's, uh, mind. Um, I'll, I'll call your attention to the agenda item itself. We talk about A and B quite a bit. A and B stands for Average Number Belonging. And, uh, it's, it's really an enrollment calculation. We do two enrollment counts, one in October, one in February. We take that count, average it, and multiply it by a factor of one eighty-seven over one eighty, and that gives us our A and B for the next year. So our, it's a, it's an enrollment number. It really drives our budgets. And so we, uh, we finished up our February enrollment count with the assistance of our staff at each of the buildings. And the A and B in the elementary district decreased by a hundred and thirteen. Uh, the high school A and B increased by eighty-four. And, uh, as, as most of you are aware, the A and B, um, i- is really used heavily extensively in the calculation of our school funding and our school budgets. And so, um, when we calculate, uh, our budgets, we do two things. We calculate the maximum and base budget, and then we also calculate the funding of those budgets. So in March, we'll talk a little bit about the funding, but tonight, I'll just, uh, briefly touch upon the calculation. The, uh, um, based upon our A and B, we are able to make estimates or projections of our increase in budget and our levies, or potential levies. These numbers can change a little bit because some of the school funding formula depends upon some state calculations. The state provides us some information on our relative, uh, special ed expenditures to the state and our free and reduced population compared to the state. These factor into a couple of components. We won't have that information until later on this week. Using our, uh, uh, calculation, at this point in time, we're estimating an increase in our general fund budget for the elementary of three hundred and three thousand dollars. That's point seven percent, um, with the forty-eight thousand dollar, three hundred and six dol-, forty-eight thousand, three hundred and six dollar operating levy. In the high school, with the boost in enrollment, our increase would be one point five million, or four point seven percent, with an overbase levy of three hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars. So I'll jump to page thirteen, uh, which Tyler's put, put up on the screen. Uh, I think it's helpful to just look at, at the calculation. It's very much a, a formula. It's a statutory formula. I'm showing the calculation of the maximum budget. This is the, uh, the most that we can adopt as a budget, as a board, you can adopt as a board, based upon our enrollment. You'll see that we have the two thousand and twenty-three calculation and the two thousand and twenty-four calculation next to it. Uh, the elementary calculation provides for really minimal increases. Uh, the school funding factors, which I'll go over in a second, um, with a little more detail. They increased by two point seven percent. That's the number at the top of that column. Uh, you'll see the basic entitlement and the per A and B entitlement. Those are the top two, um, funding components that are listed. The per A and B entitlement, as the name would suggest, is based upon our A and B calculation. If you look at that number and multiply it by eighty percent, that amount represents the base calculation. Because as I suggested, this is the maximum budget calculation. The base calculation's a little bit different, so I'll tell you what that is as we go through. So the per A and B and basic entitlement at eighty percent is, uh, is, is, uh, supports the base budget. The special ed is two hundred percent of the special ed calculation. These are two block grants that are also A and B based. A hundred and forty percent of that number is the base amount of the, the, the calculation of the base budget. The new funding components are listed below there. The Quality Educator component, that's tied to the number of educators we have. The at-risk payment, as I mentioned, this is tied to our, our relative Title One population versus the state. Indian Ed for All is based upon a per A and B calculation. American Indian Achievement Gap is, is tied to our actual number of Native American students, and Data for Achievement is also tied to per A and B. One hundred percent of those components are factored into the base budget. So the maximum budget on that calculation is forty-two point five million dollars. As mentioned, this is on A and B, uh, down here below, four thousand two sixty-one in grades K through six and one thousand two oh eight in grades six or seven through, through eight. And the reason of the ver-, the reason for the difference is the, the per A and B payment um, is lower for the students that are K-six than in the seven, eight. If you took the eighty percent of the base and per A and B amount, along with a hundred and forty percent of the special ed and one hundred percent of the new funding components, the, uh, base budget would be thirty-three point nine million dollars. That amount represents how much school districts are obligated to adopt. The amount above base to maximum is primarily represented by the overbase levy that's been passed in our district since, um, um, well, since inception of this funding formula. And as long as that overbase for, or overbase, uh, funds are used, that, uh, that levy renews from year to year. Jumping to page fourteen, you'll see the high school calculation. It's the same information, which I, I won't go through. But you'll, you can look at the maximum budget calculation, and the growth is quite a bit, uh, greater than in the elementary. Again, this is, is tied most directly to the number of student increase in our high schools compared to the elementary district. Um, you'll, you'll see that down below where we show the, uh, Urban and Sealy Swan High School A and B numbers, three thousand nine twenty-six and one oh two. Uh, this means we, we jump over the four thousand A and B barrier in the high school, which is, um, hasn't happened for a while. So this is the, the calculation of base and maximum budget. It's not how it's funded, but it's just how it's calculated. And this, this calculation is important for purposes of determining the overbase levy, which, uh, I talked about briefly. So if we jump to the funding components and a little history, um, this, this happens on page, uh, fifteen, I want to say. So if, if you look on page, uh, fifteen, um, or sixteen, excuse me, I'm showing you the, the various funding components, and I'm showing them for this fiscal year, two thousand and twenty-three, next year, two thousand and twenty-four, and then two thousand and twenty-five. And this is based upon, uh, the funding bill now before the legislature, proposed inflationary increase for two thousand and twenty-four of two point seven percent, and then three percent in two thousand and twenty-five. Three percent represents a cap or the maximum inflationary increase, um, for each of these components. So sort of following through with our calculation, the elementary basic, uh, allocation is, is with the existence of any elementary district. And for two thousand and twenty-four, that's fifty-seven thousand, two forty-six. The next line shows for every twenty-five elementary A and B over two fifty, there's an allocation of two thousand eight sixty-three, or a calculation of two thousand eight sixty-three. So we have four thousand two hundred and sixty-one, um, K-six students. You subtract two fifty, that leaves four thousand eleven. You divide that number by twenty-five, you get, um, one hundred and sixty point four. You lop off the point four, and you multiply one sixty times that, two thousand eight sixty-three. It gives you four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eighty. So that's the calculation. It's, it's bizarre. It helps to kind of go through it. The benefit of this basic entitlement calculation is for larger districts, they do recognize the enrollment, or they recognize the sta-, the, the number of students. And so, uh, it, it used to be every district got one of this, this flat amounts, but, but they are providing some, uh, some, uh, adjustment for larger districts. Middle school is a basic allocation of a hundred and fourteen, four ninety-three, and then four, five thousand, seven twenty-four for every grouping of forty-five middle school students above the four hundred and fifty. So we take the twelve oh eight middle school students, subtract four fifty, that's seven fifty-eight, divide by forty-five and multiply, that gives you sixteen. You multiply that by five thousand, seven twenty-four, and you get ninety-one thousand, five eighty-two. The high school basic, we get two basic allocations, one for Sealy and one for Urban High Schools. So that's a plus. So you take the three forty-three, four eighty-three times two for both our, uh, basic allocations. And then like the other two calculations, we, uh, for every grouping of eighty high school A and B over eight hundred, we get the seventeen thousand, one seventy-five. And we have eighty, or thirty-nine groups of eighty, and that's six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight twenty-five. So if you, you take those totals, they, they will match up with the first sheet that we, that we went through. If you look at the basic entitlement and per A and B entitlements, um, or the basic entitlements, rather. So jump into the next, the next page, uh, page seventeen. This is the per A and B entitlement, um, and you can see the elementary. And this is grades K through si-, six, six thousand, one twenty-three. Uh, that's for the first A and B, and then it's reduced by twenty cents for each A and B thereafter, up to the four-hundredth A and B, I want to say. And then seven thousand, eight forty in the high school and seventh and eighth grade. And that has that similar decrement. Yeah, it's, it's bizarre. You have to read it to understand the-
Pat, could you just back up a little bit?
Yeah, you bet. So, so it, 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 when I talk about the funding components, you really do have to see them to believe them. So, so those are, those are the funding components, um, the big ones, the basic and the per A and B. And then on page eighteen, these are, uh, these are, um, components that were added, I want to say, in two thousand and seven. And the intent is to, to get away from just A and B calculations or calculations based upon enrollment. The first one is the Quality Educator Payment, based upon quality educators. This is the thirty-five sixty-six per quality educator that's filed with the O P I. The at-risk allocation, the six million is allocated among all the districts in the state. Uh, Indian Ed for All is a per A and B. American Indian Achievement Gap is per Native American student. The Data for Achievement is per A and B. And then the Special Ed allowable cost payment is per A and B, and there's, there's two of those. And then it's multiplied by two hundred percent to give you this max budget and base budget. So any questions on the funding components or the calculation? What's that? Go back and do it again. Do over. So, so the calculation, it's tied significantly, or primarily to our enrollment, and it's very much a, a math calculation that we, we do. It's not overly complicated. But it really bears heavily upon our maximum budget and our overbase levy. So pages nineteen and twenty, I've, I've shared with you some historical data, which, which is interesting. Uh, these are really, uh, data points that, that really bear heavily upon our budget. So, um, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and even twenty twenty-one are all budget years that are based upon enrollments before COVID. So the twenty twenty-one budget year was based upon the twenty twenty enrollment counts, which is prior to COVID, because we did the February count, and COVID was sort of a March thing. So you can see that we're at, in twenty twenty, we have four thousand, four eighty-six, A and B, K-six, and we have four thousand, five sixty, uh, in twenty twenty-one. So that's, that's significant. It's reflective of the growth that was happening in K-six. Uh, in seven, eight, uh, similarly, there's growth there. You can see we went up fifty-four and then ninety-two, and in the K-six, we went up thirteen and then seventy-four. And this translated to increases in the, um, uh, in the, in the budgets. And you can see how they've, they, they grew, um, over that period of time. And, uh, then, then F Y twenty-two comes around. And, and these numbers that I'm showing here are based upon A and B averaging, which means we take the enrollment count in F Y twenty-one and we average it. For F Y twenty-two, we look at it for the, the twenty-one, twenty, and nineteen enrollments. So you get the benefit of averaging those higher enrollment years. So you, so it, it inflates our actual enrollment by averaging. Now that we're in twenty twenty-four, those high, higher A and B years are, are falling off. So that F Y twenty-one is, is, has fallen off. So that means our averaging is producing less of a, of a, uh, uh, an A and B ma-, maintenance. So if you, if you jump through the K-six A and B, you'll see we dropped one thirty-two, then we dropped sixty-eight, and now we're dropping ninety-nine. And so this is that, that pattern that's being experienced throughout the state in the K-six and really throughout the country as we talk to our demographer. and really throughout the country as we talk to our demographer. The middle school has similar drops, but not as, not as severe, but it's certainly not as many students either. Our projections for next year, good news, is that enrollment will go up by two students in the, in the, in the elementary. Which, when you compare the budget with a three percent inflationary increase and a flat enrollment that's not declining, it's really meaningful. It is impactful. So that's, that's a positive. The bottom, you'll see the voted levies over these six years. We, we had three votes. They weren't significant during this period of time. They're more in the maintenance area, including this proposed one for, for this year at forty-eight, three oh-six. If you don't, jump to page twenty on the high school side, it's, it's, it's a different picture, really. Most, most pronounced this year and last year. Again, the top, you'll see the inflationary increases. And really until this year and the next two years, you don't really see these above-two percent inflationary increases. And so we're gonna, we're anticipating a cap in FY twenty-five of three percent. I'm not sure what the actual calculation is, but I'm sure it's above three. A and B on the high school side, the last two years, it's, it's growth. Two hundred and fourteen and eighty-three in the urban high schools, and then seven and, and one in, in Sealy. And it translates, it translates to larger budgetary increases. And, and you can see that below with the calculation of the adopted budget and the, or the max budget and the base budget. And you'll see too, the voted levies, and there was three. The bottom two were not voted over-base increases, and those were based upon decreases in, in other budgeted funds. So that was a good move by the board in those two years to increase the over-base levy without, without losing that capacity by reducing other budgeted funds. And you'll see for next year, we're anticipating a three hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollar levy. And then maybe I'll jump, and I won't go into a lot of detail on these next few slides before, before you ask some questions. But the, the next slide you'll see on page twenty-one is the elementary general fund and average number belonging. So this, this is a very telling graph. You can see the, the budget growth in the elementary up until that FY twenty-one, as we talked about. And then the enrollment counts that were used for FY twenty-two and beyond, this is the following COVID, has, has been this decline. And so we think after this year, it's going to be flattening out. And that's what, that'd be suggested by the, by our demographer. The, the high school on page twenty-two, it's a different picture. It's a, it's, it's this, this climb that we had been predicting for years, it seems, in, in A and B and our enrollment in the high school. And, and it's, you, you can see it's been pronounced these last couple of years. Prior to that is fairly flat in terms of our enrollment, which is, is likely where the elementary district will be, but we'll wait and see. Page twenty-three, this gives you some historical perspective of the increase in the general fund budget and the, and the decrease in FY twenty-two, which is a first, really. And this was a year we, we didn't run an over-base levy and instead absorbed a, a large decrease in budget, given the economic climate and, and our ability to, to balance with ESER funds. You'll see that the levies are in that shaded, that lighter shaded box adjacent to the, the over, the increase in the general fund. So you can see the, the amount of the voted levy relative to the increase in the budget. And some years, there's no voted levy, but an increase in budget. The high school, much lower budgetary increases, a little bit reminiscent of what we're seeing in the hu- in the elementary, up until these last two years. And then also the much smaller over-base levies, and for a number of years, none. The, finally, the last page is, is, on page twenty-five is, is our projections right now, where we stand, how we balance. What we're doing is taking this year's a- adopted budget. We're adding the increase we just talked about, including the over-base levy, to identify the estimated increase to the general fund. This will, this may change a little bit when we get the state numbers, final state numbers. And, and you'll see the increase is, is small in the elementary and, and solid in the high school. To that increase, we've added a couple of items. On the elementary side, we're reducing a position, and then we're also not replacing nine positions. And these are anticipated retirements that wouldn't be replaced. It's, it's tied directly to our enrollment in the district. So we wouldn't have, we believe that we can reduce nine positions based upon enrollment throughout the district. And how we would reduce those positions is we would anticipate retirements at, at least ten, and we wouldn't replace those retirements. So they would instead not be staffed, they wouldn't be staffed in the buildings. And again, this is tied directly to our, our enrollment that we just talked about. The classified and certified retiree savings, these savings are based upon replacement of positions. So we're recognizing a savings in the high school of replacing certified retirements primarily. So those retirements would be at an eighty-two thousand dollar salary and a replacement at an average of fifty-four thousand. So we recognize or anticipate some savings as a result of retirements. Then you'll see the staff increases that we're building into the budget. These are negotiated increases for certified, classified, and, and all staff. One-point-five percent, along with compression and step and lane movement for certified staff. And the dollar-ten for MMCEO. This shows, oh, sorry, fifty cents for MMCEO. Anticipated obligations, these are known obligations. The one I'd point out, highlight, is the ESER funds used as an expense offset in FY twenty-three. So for this year, we're counting on ticks, two-point-six million of, of ESER funds to help us balance or operate our general fund budget. So relying upon those funds, we need to build those into the budget if we're going to keep operating as we are currently. The high school, we're relying upon six seventy-six. So again, we have to build those into the budget. They represent a negative, they're a cost. Permanent subs we're building into the budget, this is something that, this is really our, our only means of providing substitute support for our staff. And it's been a successful effort through, through the ESER funding. So we build this into our general fund budget. Before we look at other offsets, we're, we're down three million in the elementary. We're still down. We're to the good sixty thousand in the high school, those are those numbers. So in the elementary, we, we lean on ESER support again for next year. So we'd look at ESER funds to one, to the tune of one-point-seven million. We would allocate more federal IDEA Part B dollars to the elementary. This is an appropriate allocation. We had more allocated in the high school when the high school was in a, a more difficult budget position. We're also allocating certain staffing positions, fifty-five, forty-five. This is primarily the HR department and the business services department. We are currently at sixty, forty, which means sixty percent elementary, forty percent high school. The fifty-five, forty-five allocation is more reflective of enrollment. And it's really what's been in place up until probably two thousand twelve, I would guess. We have recalibrate savings, and this is, this is, this includes the sub, substitute budget position savings, some building reserve expenditures that we would, that we would peel out of the general fund. Just savings based upon how we're ending our year-end. We don't spend as much of the sub-line item, primarily because we haven't been able to get subs. And so we're building that into the budget, really building it into the staffing obligation for, for the general fund. And at this point, we're, we're about balanced, just based upon these, these moves. And it's, it's early, but it's, it's also dependent, and I think significantly so, on, on ESER for, for another year. And that's, that's true in the high school as well. Because you'll see the high school, the, the pluses of the IDEA B and the sixty, forty to fifty-five, forty-five allocation on the elementary is a negative on the high school, as it should be. And then the recalibration is less because the, those budgets have been tighter on the high school side. And then the, finally, I didn't mention the tuition fund for excess special ed costs. So we can budget, or we can permissively levy in the tuition fund expenses to support special ed students in excess of the, the regular allocation of, of general fund dollars in support of, of our students. So that's about ten thousand dollars. So we permissively levy in excess of that, and that's how we would, how we would balance. That's a lot, I know. But it's, it's really, with ESER, we're at a, a much better position than that we normally would be with this level of enrollment decline in the elementary. I mean, you can kind of imagine what we'd be looking like without ESER to, to offset expenditures in the general fund. I mean, we're still leaning on it at one-point-seven million dollars. So happy to answer any questions.
Any trustee questions? Trustee Sherman.
So the A and B, all of our, all of that money is, that comes from enrollment, not attendance, correct? Not attendance, just enrollment at this point?
That's correct, and it's prior year enrollment, which is the oddity. So our enrollment count, October of twenty-three, February of twenty-four dictates our budgets for next year.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
Yeah, I just had a, a small question, because you mentioned at the end that you were able to save for subs because you couldn't find them. But I'm assuming that the permanent subs that you've put in have helped in that respect? So you're not needing to go out and find them at this point?
Yeah, that's exactly right. So that's, that's made a difference, having subs there in the building every day. And, and it, it really is an add of, of an obligation up above and then an offset down below.
Trustee Decker.
Thanks. I had two questions, now I can't remember the second one. The first one, though, I remember. So the nine retiree positions that are not being replaced, I'm just wondering if you would talk a little bit about how, like, what the ripple effects are of that? Because we've talked before about how having, you know, fewer children than accreditation would allow in one building doesn't necessarily mean that staffing works out. Because you, so how, what happens with those nine positions? It's not necessarily as easy as simply not replacing them, I'm guessing.
It really isn't, and I'll let Dave talk about it. But I, it's a, it's a dance. I mean, I think it's a lot of work that HR puts into the movements that happen. And, and his off, Dave's, I'll let him talk about it. But the, we look at accreditation, and we look at incoming students, and we look at staffing for those, those classes at each building. And among all of those twelve elementary buildings, there are certain spots where you're still within accreditation. And so you've had four teachers, and now next year you need three. You don't need four, you need three, and you can still meet accreditation. So Dave, you want to talk about the movement that happens?
Yeah, it is a dance, like, like Pat says. If you look at just the elementary with nine schools, six grade levels, about three classrooms at least, that's like a hundred and sixty-plus classrooms and teachers that you have. And we do, what we do is each year I evaluate, we take the first graders, move them to second grade, the second to third, et cetera, and use that cohort information. And then we rely upon the demographic information about our incoming kindergarten class. And then we have a formula, you just run through it to, it's just a math problem, to see where you're going to end up with your estimated class sizes the next year. And so in the kindergarten, first, second grades, you're limited to twenty students. Third and fourth, you do twenty-eight, and then everything from fifth all the way through high school is limited to thirty. So we look at those numbers and then make a determination on where we're going to have to either add or cut. And so this year, at both the elementary and middle school level, we're going to be seeing some cuts in positions, but we also will see some additions. Sometimes you'll have three classes in a, four classes, say, in the second grade, and then the next year needs to add a teacher into the third grade. But likewise, the incoming class is smaller. So it is something we evaluate and watch real closely. This year, we're being much more conservative with it, that is pushing closer to those accreditation limits. In the past several years, with the ESER funds, we were a little bit much more liberal, I would say, in maintaining those smaller class sizes. But in the next coming year, we're, because of the budgetary issues, we're going to be a lot closer, like we have historically done.
So to follow up to that, I'm assuming that, that maybe none of those retirements are in the newly created positions that we started funding with ESER, and that we've been having conversations at the board level about what happens with those positions? The specialist, behavior specialists, instructional coaches, art teachers, et cetera. And so, you know, this is, we haven't really made those decisions yet as, or have those, where, where are we at with those decisions? Vis a vis how much staffing funding is available? Because we're taught, these nine, the way that you described that, these are all, those are all classroom teachers that you're describing impact. But we have a lot of folks that aren't in those roles.
Yeah, and you're correct. We actually have had very detailed conversations about all of those other ESER-funded positions. Behavior interventionists and the academic interventionists. Next year, we're going to be looking at one per school versus two. We are looking at retaining all of the art teachers that we've had in the past, moving forward. But we did, you're, you're correct. I mean, this just, when we're talking about retirees, some of them will hit some of those positions, some are art. You're right, they do not align directly with where our, our cuts would, would be. I think what Pat does when he goes through it, though, is says that we'll probably have at least this number of savings and is using that in his budget analysis. But the point about those ESER positions, you're absolutely right. I mean, those decisions have been made. This has been that, this is that tough week in our district, where the principals are talking to our teachers. We're doing the pink slipping in anticipation of what positions we might have available for this fall. And we'll be going to arenas, which I think most of you are aware of, where we have any open positions that are left from resignations and retirements that'll be available to both certified and classified staff later in this month, later in March.
Trustee Vogel.
I just have two quick questions. I noticed that the Missoula A and B and the Sealy Swan A and B are separate items. Is there a different formula that you have to use, and is it because they're more rural?
You know, we, we report them that way because we're required to. But they're the same dollars per A and B, so they have the same effect. So you have, you'll add the two together when we, when we submit the A and B to the state. And when we do these calculations, I'll combine the two of them.
So why are they separate, then?
Well, you know, we, they show them as two districts, and that's why we get two basic entitlements. So, so we get an urban basic entitlement and then a Sealy Swan basic entitlement. And it's sort of a before-my-time exception created, I think, through the legislature, given the distance of travel by Sealy to Missoula. So they, they allowed it to exist within our district as a standalone district for the basic entitlement purposes. So then we calculate them separately, but really for all intents and purposes, they're combined for the calculation.
Secondly, February sixth was one of the counts. Just to put a little plug in there, that was on the high school calendar as a professional development day or a day off. And then it was caught sometime in the fall, and communication was sent out to families saying, oh, we will have school on February sixth. We won't have school the following Monday, February thirteenth. I may or may not have been one of those parents that- I may or may not have been one of those parents that disregarded that email, and so, my student may or may not have stayed home on that day, thinking that he had that day off. So, that affected the count. So, maybe going forward, when we get the calendars out there, let's make sure that the days off, the professional development days, don't accidentally overlap with the A and B days. Thank you.
Okay, just respond to that, because it's, it's a great point about attendance for the, for the count, but it's, it's not on one day. The, the actual count date is that day when they're submitted, but you go back 11 days. So, we get, we get to look back and, and adjust for that, so we probably got them counted.
But you are late. We, we caught that day late. We, we are definitely guilty of that. I agree.
Any other trustee comments or questions? Trustee Sherman.
So, as we adjust and do these, did I understand that arena? So, all of these positions are open first to the teachers and the staff that we already have?
Yes, the process works this way. If, there's a complexity to it. There's, there's in-building move, displaced teachers, facilitated transfers, there's a lot of different steps that we have contractually that we're going to be going through in the next few weeks. In the end of that, when it's all sorted out, if there are any open positions in the district, then those go to what we call arenas, where any certified teacher can, that's eligible or qualified for a position can apply. And 100%, if I have 20 people apply for a third-grade position, all 20 will get interviewed for that position. If after that arena, there are a few remain, any other positions remaining, and there usually are, any classified member who is certified as a teacher, and we have many of those, they can then apply for those jobs as well. That is applying for jobs before they go to the public and they guarantee an interview. Then finally, in April, when those are done, should we have any other positions or new positions open up, then those will go out to the public and also be available for any certified or classified staff. So, it gives them that advanced step, and it's a great process for us, because unfortunately, sometimes as we're going through these positional cuts, you end up having non-tenured, several non-tenured teachers that are getting pink slipped, that we desperately do not want to pink slip, that we keep, want to keep, that at least now get to go to arenas and, and have a chance to get right back into the district. It's, it's, it's a painful process and, and it's, this week for the principals, it's very, very hard, because you have incredible teachers that are part of teams that we have to go through this process, and, and this is probably the toughest year we've had in a decade with that. But it was coming down the pike with the enrollment losses. It was inevitable that we're going to get to this point at some time.
Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
Yeah, I had a question that was very related to that. How much movement around is it between all of the schools in the district? I mean, how, how often does a teacher from CS Porter end up at a different school and vice versa?
I would say that every year that happens. Most often in arenas, what you have is non-tenured or people with one-year positions trying to get back into their position, or, for example, if you have a, a teacher that was a late hire, you have a teacher that's hired, say, in October, even though they're going to work the whole year, that job is going to have to be posted the following year, so all teachers in the district have an opportunity. So, generally, you just have the non-tenured or people trying to go back to their same positions. That being said, you often have teachers that are wanting to move across district or try different grades or, for whatever reason, and so, that occurs.
Trustee Decker.
I remembered my other question, which is, I know we're not at the end of the legislative session yet, can't come soon enough, but I am wondering whether any of our-
We're not yet halfway.
Wondering if any of our projections or our budget could possibly be impacted by anything that's moving, or if anything that the legislature might decide wouldn't actually take effect until next year's budgets, kind of no matter what? Like, what, how, how volatile might this be based on what's happening in Helena?
Yeah, I, I, I think there's a lot of action going on over there, but I don't think there's much that's impactful to this calculation for the general fund. There was a bill that had voting requirements for the May, May votes of 50%, so turnout requirements that, that was tabled, but that would have been problematic. But the, the governor's budget included the 2.7 and the 3%. So, there, that's within the bill, I forgot the number, that, I think it is House Bill 15, that'll get to the, the governor's desk soon. So, I think it's moving along quicker than, than, sometimes we do see some, some, some things that are hanging out there.
Any final questions? Seeing none, any public comment on the agenda item? Seeing none. We'll move on to topic two, which is the building reserve levy update, and it is, again, information only, so I'll turn it over to you, Mr. McWilliams.
Yeah, thank you. So, last board meeting, we discussed, we started discussing building reserve that we're proposing, building reserve levy we're proposing to be voted on in May, in the May section, May 2nd election. Just kind of want to do some recap and explain some of the processes we're going through and just kind of keep it fresh in everybody's mind. As Pat said, we'll continue to talk about the budget probably over the next few months. We'll do the same with the building reserve. You know, really want to stress a couple of things, and one is being that this is really the primary budgeting source for building reserve, for, for building maintenance in regards to all maintenance repair replacements, equipment repair replacements, equipment such as custodial equipment, grounds equipment, trades equipment, food service, sorry, scratch food service, sometimes food service, print shop, our warehouse. So, we have, we have quite the umbrella of what this funding source encompasses. We're not funded the same way as Pat just kind of explained with A and B. We're not funded the same way as, say, the city local, the local city, county tax base. We're, we're strictly funded by this building reserve levy. We do acquire some building reserve funds, I'm sorry, some general funds to help us along through the way, but it's, it's really probably around 20% or less of our complete funding is, is funded through the general fund. Now, and I apologize, I don't have a, have the PowerPoint that I brought last time, but I kind of went through the fixed costs of what has been offset through general fund dollars, some of those things being pest control, snow removal, all our licensing fees, our, our alarm monitoring services. So, some of those things, that's about $325,000 of fixed costs that the general fund has been picking up. So, part of this advantage of the building reserve is what we want to really do is, one, we want to focus on safety. We've done a lot of safety improvements with our bond projects, but we have a long ways to go. We were able to establish some great processes, but we need to continue to expand on those processes to make our buildings even more safe. Second is, we need to address these fixed costs to help alleviate some of the general fund dollars as well. So, what can we alleviate off the general fund, that burden, and utilize within the building reserve funds and taking that snowplow and those licensing fees and actually putting it into the building reserve where they really do belong? And then, of course, just our annual operating costs in regards to all repair replacement or equipment, as I kind of just mentioned. We'll continue to research and go through what those dollars will look like. We'll come back in March and, and we'll bring in what, what the impact of the taxpayer is and then kind of what our final numbers are and how we, we came to those numbers as well. I think that's really important, so, and I'm, can I answer any questions if you have any?
Any questions? Seeing none. So, any public comment on the agenda item? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. McWilliams. So, now we'll move on to item B, which is personnel negotiations and policy. Topic one is to approve the personnel report for the elementary district. Any trustee questions? Or no, sorry, over to you, Mr. Roth.
It's okay, it's, it is our regular monthly personnel report.
Favorite sentence of the meetings. Okay. Any trustee questions? Elementary trustee questions? Seeing none. I'll take an elementary motion for the, to approve the monthly report, personnel report from elementary trustee. Moved by trustee Witt, second by trustee Mercer. Any final trustee comments? Any public comment? All elementary trustees in favor of approving the monthly personnel report, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present, elementary trustees. Moving on to the high school personnel report, Mr. Roth.
It would also be the regular report.
Thank you. Any trustee questions? Seeing none, I take a motion to approve the high school personnel report, moved by trustee Sherman, second by vice chair Walker Andrews. Any final comments by trustee? Any public comment? All trustees in favor of approving the high school report, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Moving on to topic two, which is to approve the wage salary increase for summer seasonal positions. Back over to you, Mr. Roth.
Hi, this is our annual wage increase for our summer seasonal employees. This year, it looks a little bit different than it might have in the past. I want to emphasize that these positions that, that you're looking at, the wages are for, really are non-existing employees, right? These are just for people that you might hire just singularly for the summer position. What you note below, the probably the biggest change that we're doing this year is for any of our existing classified people, MMCEO members, these wages won't apply. What they will be paid is their actual wages that they're earning during the school year. So, they'll be paid both their hourly wage in that position and their step down. So, in the past, we'd actually, some of those employees unfortunately would come in in the summer to work in these non-union positions and they'd get paid less. What we decided to do is to move all of those pays up, so now they're receiving the wages they do for us during the year. It allows them to have employment throughout the year at the wage that they should be earning, so I think it's a step in the right direction.
Any trustee questions? Trustee Decker.
What is a seasonal agricultural worker for MCPS?
That would be somebody working at the ag center, out at the farm with Big Sky.
So, they're, they're adults, they're not, I mean, then we have students also?
Mostly, they're student workers, I believe. I did differentiate this year and added student worker in there in case there was student workers that worked for us in different positions, but mostly, you're correct, the ag center workers in the summer are student workers.
I'm just curious as to why they, we wouldn't have, we don't have those workers in the school year? There's not, like, are there ag workers that work in the school year in those roles? They're the only roles, really, that aren't, that don't have that same-
We do have a student wage that we have during the school year, and we may be coming to later for those, but this is just for the summer work.
But the, they don't have the MMCEO membership, the agricultural workers don't-
Thank, yes, no, I'm sorry, you're, they do not.
Why?
We don't have student workers as part of our ag center.
Oh, so the ag, the ag workers are literally students also?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, confused.
No, I'm sorry, that wasn't clear.
Any other trustee questions? Seeing none, I'll take a full board motion to approve the recommendation. Moved by trustee Vogel, second by trustee Sherman. Any final comments by trustee? Any public comment?
I'm Carleen Hathaway, I'm the president of MMCEO. I just wanted to say thank you, Dave, and anybody else that worked with you on getting this to happen, and I would appreciate it if you would approve this. It means a lot. We've had a lot of our MMCEO folks work in these summer seasonal positions and watch their wage just bottom out a little bit to, to do the summer seasonal work, and if they're doing the same job that they're doing for you all year long, this just makes sense, and I really appreciate it. So, thank you very much, and I would appreciate it if you would approve this. Thanks.
Any other public comment? Seeing none. All those trustees in favor for approving the recommendation for the wage salary increase for summer seasonal position, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. So, now we'll move on to topic three, which is to approve early kindergarten learning program calendar for 2023, 2024. Over to you, Mr. Roth.
Hi, I, I'll do a general talk about all of the calendars. These are the last four remaining calendars for the year, and I do want to emphasize, we did absolutely get the date correct this year for the professional development. So, you had already previously adopted the middle school, elementary, and high school calendars back in January. So, these are the four remaining calendars that are left. If you, the early calendar, the, I'm sorry, the early kindergarten calendar and the Jefferson preschool calendar, those two, reminder that there's only a 720-hour requirement and that those dates that you'll see here correspond with the other, the elementary calendars that we have. The only difference I would point out is that you have a little bit later start date and a little earlier end date, but that doesn't present a problem in terms of hours. I would mention too, then, then I'll answer questions, on the Sealy-Swan High School and Willard. The Willard High School follows the high school calendar that we have out. The only difference is there's a few days for the staff to work together with students during different grading periods. Otherwise, the start and end dates and all of the other corresponding professional development dates are the same. The Sealy-Swan, as you know, is just slightly different because they have that four-day week and they work with students on Friday, but there's, it's, otherwise, it aligns with what our other high schools are doing. I think the only other modification that you would note is it starts one day earlier in the year and it ends one day earlier in the year. They just shifted, and the other calendar, we ended on a Friday, they were ending it on a Thursday, because that's when they normally have their schedule. So, I'd be happy to entertain any questions about those four different calendars, though I know you have to go through each forum individually.
Yeah, we can vote individual, but we can do all your intro and questions now. Any trustee questions about the calendars? Trustee Mercer?
What is records day at Willard?
Well, they'll be working with the students and doing grading with the students, so they have more individual meetings with the students at Willard.
Any other trustee questions? So, we'll do each calendar individually. The first two are an elementary motion. Is there a motion to approve the early kindergarten learning program calendar for 2023, 2024? Moved by trustee Witt. Second by trustee Mercer. Any final comments? Any public comment? All elementary trustees in favor for approving the early lending, early kindergarten learning program calendar? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. On to the Jefferson preschool program calendar. Is there a motion by elementary trustee to approve that calendar? Moved by trustee Decker, second by trustee Witt. Any final comments? Any public comment? All elementary trustees in favor for approving the Jefferson preschool program calendar, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Trustee Witcher? Unanimous to all trustees present. On to topic four, five, which is to approve the Sealy-Swan High School calendar for 2023, 2024. Is there a high school trustee motion to approve that calendar? Moved by vice chair Walker Andrews. Second by trustee Sherman. Any final comments? Any public comment? All trustees in favor for approving the Sealy-Swan High School calendar for 2023, 2024, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. On to six, which is to approve Willard Alternative High School calendar for 2023, 2024. Is there a motion by, moved by trustee Sherman? Second by vice chair Walker Andrews. Any final comments? Any public comment? All trustees in favor for approving the Willard Alternative High School calendar, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. The time is 7:30 and we are adjourned.
Recording stopped.